Next on the agenda, we'll hear from the Budget Committee about the approval of amendments.
Good day, everyone. The Budget Committee has met several times. We met a few weeks ago. We talked about budget amendments. You should have all those copies in your packet. I'm gonna do all of them in one. I'll share with the library except for one. That one comes in the last minute for the library that may not be in your packet. All of the budgets are all ready. We're up in all forms. I will make a motion to have a committee recommendation approved on that.
Committee recommendation of second required. Any discussion? Here is no discussion. All in favor of approving the budget amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any vote?
I have one more from the library that came up this week recently. This is one that everybody can get their call to and tell how you're doing well. The revenue stream on the budget for the library, they've been allocated seventy-five thousand dollars for TDA funds. TDA allocated money to the taxes every year. That budget stream has been dedicated to them for years and years and paid seventy-five thousand dollars. That's what the revenue end showed, but somehow over the last year, it was not the library's fault. It showed that revenue film was gonna be at hundred thousand dollars. There was not a hundred thousand dollars removed from TDA from that stretch of the stream. But there was, it did show a hundred thousand dollars. And it's no fault of theirs. Naturally, they want that money. They won't be able to spend that money. So that would be something that had to be approved from this committee. The grant that has a budget, that would have to come from General Fund. Keep in mind, any money, I'm obligated to say, is any money that you spend from General's fund tonight, from the fund balance tonight, will accumulate into another kind of budget. So that would be the way the committee did recommend this. As a budget amendment, this simple cause, it was not their fault. It was clear at some point down the road. But it's all in your decision. So I wanted to make it plain, it's not their fault. We made our money. But any money that this board approves from fund balance will be taken, will have been looked at in part at the deficit, moved forward also. How would that be approved? It would be a motion to approve twenty-five thousand dollars for fund balance to offset the revenue line stream. The current rule, General Fund.
Is that a budget committee recommendation? Is there a commission? Budget committee recommendation of second required. Any discussion? Here is no discussion. Roll call, please.
Jerry Lowes?
Yes.
Kevin Falcone?
No.
Bubba Edson?
No.
Al McKenna?
Yes.
Jerry King?
No.
Andrew Holliday?
No.
Johnny Garner?
No.
Carolyn Higgins?
No.
Ann Moore?
No.
Dwight Fingham?
No.
Renee Phelps?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
No.
Tim Prog? Alan Jacke?
I did.
Barry Smith?
No.
Brendan Matthews? Todd Lewis is on here. Ricky Hardy?
No.
Mike Alentani?
No.
Fourteen noes. Motion failed. For the reports, the school system. Good evening, folks. I believe you have copies of the quarter report. This is for the third quarter beginning March. Here are any questions that you may have.
Mr. Johnson, would you mind on the General purpose school, number forty-one, there was revenue from four-seven. Just for the benefit of the community commissioners, are we still in habit?
Sure.
You guys expect too much of the explanation. There is an estimated two-hundred thousand dollars in the line that isn't received. And how that works?
Well, and thanks for asking the question. For those who may not have knowledge of this, that dollar amount represents the refunds that we will receive from federal grants. Again, there is a certain allotment that is given or shared that is concluded in the end of these federal grants, federal amounts that allows you to spend for those measuring costs or those other incidental costs that can go any direction. Based on the conversation I've had with Stacy regarding that, the reason why it's not included yet is because of the way it's looking. It's reversed for those costs. We are not yet at the end of our fiscal year, so that when we approach June, we will have those costs included.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Sandra Bryce. Any other question?
I'd like to motion to approve the school funds. Let's give me three weeks' amendments.
I'm sorry.
Motion made, seconded to approve the just as General Fund, the General purpose school fund, which is both lines for schools. Just a word of the court.
Okay.
Your motion to approve quarter report?
Yes.
Just with the General purpose, you propose. I didn't get it. I'm sorry.
I don't have some proof.
General purpose, okay. General purpose. Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? General purpose school fund, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Here we have some process also, page three. Page four is cap year term. Page five, cap year project, the catch-up cap year project, the amount of profit for the trust. Completely the way that it is. Again, that's from pages three and back. If you have any questions, I would like to try and answer. If not, I'll say it.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve the rest of the report. Any discussion? Here is no, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Commission. Highway four.
Appreciate my time. I'm hoping to approve this quarter report.
Second. Motion made, seconded to approve the highway report. Any discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Thank you. County trusted.
Good evening. Hope everybody has a board. Stacy twisted my arm, ankle first, but I think you're bored. Everybody get one? Any questions? Comments?
Make a motion to approve.
There. Motion made, seconded to approve the trustee report. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
County judge.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
All of you have copies in your packet? If you have all of that, it's gone. We'll have to read mine online. Any questions, anybody?
Here I might know some good for.
Why is second? Or can I get a second? Motion made, seconded to approve the county general report. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Are you gonna do the sideways?
That's hard. Again, you should have written back, it's all those. Any questions, please. No questions, actually, no one? I'm not talking to the board.
Do you want me to second?
You can be the second here.
Okay.
We have been asked to speak up. Some people in the audience have made that request before the meeting started. So if y'all get a chance to use microphones, it helps. They don't hear. We can't hear anything. Motion is made, seconded to approve the solid waste report. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's see, we are the library reporting.
And then you should have left us all in fact.
Another motion, my second.
Motion made, seconded to approve the library report. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Fire department.
I don't have enough to listen to.
Yeah, go ahead with that. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
You should all have the drug control and the general debt service reports later in the pack.
Go ahead.
Any questions on the order?
Motion made, seconded. Motion made, seconded. To approve the drug control and... Debt service. Debt service. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Martin Flowers, duty holiday.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here today to ask you all to consider funding for the June 2nd national and even now state holiday related to us through our government. It is an honor holiday to recognize and commemorate the freedom of slavery. And last year, it was okay to give us five hundred dollars. And this year, we're just asking if you would consider giving us a thousand to help us with that issue.
What do you use this money for?
Well, we have rental agreements for the staging facility and also for the entertainment that we have. We had a field bazaar last year to come, decently to come back this year. We had a great time. So the money is used to facilitate the...
I love to use the facilities.
We do, any cost. It's a non-profit, but we do use it, yes.
Right, it's county is, I don't have way too much to eat.
Well, we're not bad for it.
Yeah, we are.
Thank you. I'm asking.
If we don't, if we not do it now?
Sounds like you would.
I'm gonna give you five thousand. Take it out, and you got a thousand, you said.
Okay, well, listen. My wife said, my wife said it was. I can't. Thank you for what you did, if you could help us.
Thank you. Let's join this town. We have several individuals that come throughout City and County that come to this city. We want to make Chester County aware of it. I think some of you will see the fact that it's on during that time that we celebrate. And we have the arrival of entertainment and people that's there. We have different talent shows. And also funding this year, what we are doing and considering doing at this time also, is having like fashion shows, talent shows. And in those, those persons will be asked for donations or asked to give. And that funding will be used for scholarships. We're going to build it up. This is just where it's become a national now state observant holiday. And we want Chester County to be recognized as recognizing this as well, and I can't.
Does the city make a donation?
It is. It is.
What's your?
A vaccine. The city gives a vaccine as well.
I make a motion to give a thousand dollars. That's sacred.
Motion's been made, seconded to donate a thousand dollars to June 2nd celebrations. Any discussion? That would be a world goal, but... Money for...
Jerry Lowes? Kevin Falcone?
No.
Bubba Edson?
No.
Al McKenna?
No.
Jerry King?
Yes.
Andrew Holliday?
Yes.
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Ann Moore?
Yes.
Dwight Fingham?
No.
Renee Phelps?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Tim Prog? Barry Smith?
Yes.
Brendan Matthews?
No.
Todd Lewis? There's that, sorry. Vicki Hardy?
No.
Mike Alentani?
No.
It's nine in February, seven against. That's not a charge. If anybody like to change it up?
I was, I was representing, I was there. I'm not sure. Darren, do you have two?
Yes. In the fifth district?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your role, for your, for your gift, for the effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor for...
This nice T D district, the Enble community. We had a good lunch and also we talked about things in the county. And we brought fine Smith with us from H R A. He explained some programs to help them in their community. They're getting internet in the Enble community real soon. It's supposed to start in July. They're assessing polls and all now to see which ones that need getting replaced and put internet on or put supply on. And also about some programs that they have there. And I would like to in the future go into other communities and see, tell them about some programs that can help the citizens in that community. Also, I'd like to bring up something that might not be familiar or good to talk about right now. But we're in the process of working on our budget for the county. And I know we're talking about different things and laying out situations and all. But there is some talk going on around the county about that we might have to raise taxes. And I have people calling and asking me all the time, and that's something. They ask why are we building buildings and everything and trying to raise taxes. I said, well, there's nothing that we can do. We're still working on this. But in my opinion, if we could, we need to bring back up Indian Mission for review of what we're doing. I know we haven't started building yet. I know this is not a corporate thing. But it wouldn't be good in our situation to be building new buildings and then have to turn around and tax them. So I wish that would be come back up for review and let's look the situation over and see what we can do.
Haven't we get some growth all of a sudden, what I like to know? Haven't we get some growth?
That's what we're doing, figuring out.
Well, you know, it's not good though or not. It's got to have been going on.
Well, the harbor fund is...
But that was separate from...
Well, that's what it's supposed to be, but it hasn't been separated yet. That's still under review. We're working on that now.
Couldn't we get eight-hundred, eight-hundred thousand dollars of that harbor fund for the camp?
Well, it was explained by Ms. Judy and all that we had a revenue loss of twenty-eighty-nine hundred thousand that should have been held on to in the budget. But we took the option that they gave us out on the final of the harbor fund. That we took the ten-thousand dollars less to put it in your revenue fund for the camp.
Right.
So that's just something that we're doing here that I wish we'd review and talk about before we go any further. And our taxpayers regret that they maybe late us.
So that revenue loss wasn't even counted?
Yes.
That revenue loss was even counted?
The revenue loss, we did receive.
We should have gotten that money, put that back into our fund, yes.
And we selected committees at first because when the money was received in the harbor fund, when it was harbor money, we had to classify and approve that there's certain classifications the entities have to qualify for. So we selected committees to go around and talk and get up the qualifications for them to even be a qualification to get any of the funding. But when the final come out for it that we committed all the revenue loss, we took that option and it becomes into the county money. So if you would, I just appreciate it because I've been called so much and I know it's a harsh situation for all of us right now. But if we could review that and just see what other options we could have.
Everybody have an ambulance situation, Governor, too?
Yes, ma'am. That's something we also, we have a meeting later this week, the review of alcohol amounts. And we're having meetings with the E M S department and hopefully can reduce that, what the amount of money that they asked us for. They asked us for four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, and we're reviewing that in the business committee. And we're trying to, their phone's on and explaining, and maybe they can bring us down the reduction in that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, if you want to talk about three-star body right there?
Yes. We have a three-star program in the county that runs through the Chamber of Commerce. It is a program we do each year to keep that destination, to help us in our grant programs. We do it every year. It's just a form we have to do that says the county agrees to it and that we can re-recognize and help us out. And we're just, we're just like an approach. Something that we do each year.
No action required? No action required?
Yes, we need to ask that that be approved for us to continue on in the program with three-star. I believe Stacy has seen that I have it with him, but it is something we need to...
How is that word?
It's for strength of the family. Okay, thank you.
I've got a question. It talks about death policy, reviewing the death policy with commissioners?
It is a form that we have to fill out, send in to the government. It's called Physical Strength and Efficient Government Physical Confirmation Letter for the three-star program. It has the requirements that we have to fill out that we can still participate in the program. It just tells that we have an annual cash flow. Do you want me to read that? Read it all?
No.
I did last year. I read the whole letter. I hope everybody understands that. It's the same thing we do in the mission. But we do have, I'd like to motion next to the mission.
Make the motion.
I'm saying.
Motion made, Johnny Garner, second. To approve the three-star letter?
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Thank you. I have on here library resolution. Is that something that you think that was the resolution?
The resolution, that place that resolution.
Say, you want to move on, on that? All right, we'll go to the next commission. We're going to...
I really didn't, I just like say, because what we've done, everyone has, we got, wait, it's on the news. Sorry, I didn't realize, obviously, they weren't discussing it. But as most of you know, we had, we got approval to replace for bid. The bids were submitted last week. We had three companies, three contractors that actually bid on that. And the purchasing, the purchasing committee has the actual numbers that they had submitted. But there was the little bit, I believe, don't let me speak for you, Mr. Lowes, I'm sorry. But I believe that the purchasing committee in their meeting made a recommendation to... to accept the low bid, which was for E and T Contracting. And the total amount is one point two million, roughly.
We got approval pending those funds already. And we directed the election commission to go back and get bids, bring the bids back, find approval. And what was the, what is, Mr. West, what is the final?
The, uh, the base bid from E and T Contracting was one million, two eighty-seven, two point nine. That was the base bid. There were a couple of, uh, de-deaf alternatives that were still up in the air. I think we'll be letting it be. And we are also working with E and T to see if there are any other savings, uh, possibly bring that number up for that. But as, as Adam said, I think the recommendation was to accept that whole year number from, from two eighty.
I have a question. When you had that in the audit. Was it suggested that y'all have a building or was it mandated?
It was, they were not telling me one or the other. They're saying these are all the pains that are wrong, but it's, these are the second concerns for the election office to, to potentially impact elections in Chester County. And, um, we had been asked not to list that information. So there's basically a plan that this is how to have you to Chester County elections. This is how to write me, this is how to control elections. So make sure for the comments, true, doesn't want that information squared out. But as we said the last fourteen months, we all, there's a whole list of things and there goes nothing left. The building is not going to come home, uh, and have a successful. It is not going to stop leaking. We're not going to have, stop having mold. We're not going to stop having transcompletees in the road. It's just, the, the equipment is a GDB that is going to make you be compromised. And so it's a matter of, honestly, this decision is already identified. That it was a valid, it's quit. And so at this point, honestly, I'm not going to go back and review the building.
Does that mean that we have many, many approvals, uh, making some adjustments like the rig and so forth? Those were the things we were talking about. We had a figure. Or Commissioner Higgins?
Yes, I would like to speak. If we're voting to build this building, okay, one, two, eight, nine, why can't we not see that audit?
As I said...
For the county commissioners?
As I said, Department of Homeland Security considers that to be confidential information because in essence, what it is, is here's a report, here's all the witnesses for the election office.
Who's seen it besides you?
My election commissioners and mayor officials.
Okay, they've seen it, but we can't see it.
Sorry, Commissioner, I'm curious, I can't, but...
I said, she said that y'all had seen that audit, but we can't see it as the commissioner said, at the vote and spending that money.
It has to be confidential, that confidential, because...
Why not say it?
It's not always confidential.
Why?
The call's there.
We're the commissioners, they vote on that money.
This is being, being a personal...
No, it's not personal. There's people who... It is, it is sovereign, it's personal. It's not personal. Oh, yes. No, it's not my experience.
It's bad.
It's a personal, y'all, it's a personal.
They, they, they... He's not in charge of working that office, we've not seen it.
Well, he has, he's an election, she works. So where's the commissioners, their vote again? She works for him. So where's voting in to spend that money?
We've already voted to be...
Yeah, always have liked to prove the thing.
I saw we're just proving today that we've already proved the thing. You know, Commissioner Higgins, that's the reason that the audit did not make funding because it would be a plan or a terrorist to look at the voting procedure or where there's any failure. So that audit, you've seen that audit, I'm sure, for several years. How long have you been on the commission? How long have you been in the audit, or how long has it been around, about three years? It's actually the county commission is responsible for funding the election commission. It's not the election commission that is saying, obviously, you know, uh, the election commission is not your responsible for funding the election. We, that's what we knew, we put our election.
Okay, the building wasn't mandated, though. It was just...
The building wasn't mandated, but it could be later if we keep failing the audit.
It's like, but it had to go before judges made it later to mandate.
Not necessarily. It's, it's the state election commission says, we have to land a party, let them do it.
Okay.
Maybe the county election commission, the county commission wants to put the equipment in this, wants to engage with the elections, wants to rent a liability system where people follow as stakeholders. I mean, those are all things you need to consider. It's not like voting for not a half-day dollar just to replace the equipment. But we need to consider liability.
We had to move it once, right? We had to move it over here, we're going to lose this, please.
Yes, all that has been fixed, you know, because...
That's right, we're going to put it all in one place and have...
Right?
No.
He said, okay, okay.
Well, the roof's been fixed.
Let's, uh, let's move forward, this is all we want.
Thank you.
Let's move forward. We have...
Commissioner Higgins, I'd like to contact the election commission, say a Monday at four o'clock, anytime you want to come.
Okay.
He asked, thank you. Should have been, now we're doing that, so we're all good. Thank you for your...
Well, the county's roads, it's a, it's been, it's been, we're going to fix the border building.
A lot of the commissioners were the favor of building more of the election commission building. Just a little bit to remind you there.
The, what we're voting on, fixing to vote on, is really regarding the purchasing committees. The purchasing committee, would you like to tell us, is chairman of purchasing committee of fixing to vote?
Okay, we love to figure so whole bidding, it's something to, way over five, with one out. The bill is a bill. And, uh, so, we went ahead and, uh, got bids. And, uh, E and T was the low bidder. One bid at two hundred and seventy-six and a hundred and forty-five dollars. We had a good board bid, one of them was one bid at three forty. And the other was, uh, proper construction, or that was proper. Another was MSB. Uh, their bid was one bid at three hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred. So, uh, naturally, we voted to take the lump of low bids. With E and T's already, I mean, they're here in town anyway, and, uh, anyway, they were low bid, so that's, 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 that's on the way we need to go. I mean, I think we need to go ahead and stop arguing and start it on itself. Because the whole court loaded the hood.
Well, that's the, that's your committee recommendation. Okay. Committee recommendation, no second required. All in favor of accepting the low bid, E and T, on the election commission building?
Don't forget to vote.
We will vote out. Vote out, Mr. Blair.
Jury vote. Justice. Attorney call. No. Burger agent.
No.
Al McKenna.
Yes.
Jury King.
Yes.
Andrea Hall.
No.
Johnny Gar.
No.
Carolyn Higgins.
No.
Anne Moore.
No.
Mike Mallow.
Yes.
Renee Phelps.
Yes.
Jerry Earl.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Brenda Matthews.
Yes.
Ricky Hardy.
Yes.
Mike Alathani.
Yes.
Eleven six, passes.
Next thing on the agenda, other committee reports, report from the audit committee. John Moore is chairman of the audit committee, he's not here. But all, I'll just report on that. There were four members of the audit committee. We met, approved all the findings in the audit and no findings were serious. And we approved every, uh, elected officials' report that they made and approved their, uh, recommendations to correct any problems that they had in their office. So really, nothing there other than that to report. The fire and highway committee was game. The, uh, highway committee, that, that call is in here, they're probably running a contact, you know, the committee, uh, Terry Ryan out here. That's, that's Terry County. Forty dollars, we got questions, so, check, so, the, the, right down, this is a hot game, so, you have to go, the Terry County, it's a road, it's back in Terry. So your match, you could have stopped it for a dollar or a dollar, you got three. Obviously, it's walking roads. So that's what the committee recommended on this, the audit. Non-Terry, we swapped out, pretty much swapped out that, those are roads that pop in the road, non-Terry, aren't here, so, we thought it was pretty short road, that's, that's what our view recommended. I think Allison. Non, but, who?
Two.
Who?
Two.
Do you want to vote on the road specification separately? Audit didn't explain that, it did it. So that was a committee recommendation, no second required, to swap the roads. Any discussion? I hear any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? All right. On the road paper, I'll let you round your final answer.
The chair for space, and I've, I guess, been working on this, I think, through the office, except for, and I've got the surrounding candidates and here the city about getting our specs up to, to more standards. And the British A and N, which means, uh, probably chicken, when I can extend it elsewhere. The biggest change here only here is, uh, getting them to pass all of them. So, God, whoever develops a subdivision page, it will be taken. And, uh, that's about the biggest change I made.
Did you say this is kind of what the surrounding candidates did?
Yeah, and this is really the mental, Mary Anderson candidate, and say, I'll give him, and weigh on him, and, 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 and try to stand, consider not merely the blood, but the, even the city leaders. This is about the specs off for city leaders.
Did you have any thoughts or thoughts about that, Matt? We all owe you, yeah, for that. Okay, this is committee recommendation, no second required. Any discussion on the road specs? If not all, the mayor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any vote?
Thank you.
Solid question, committee.
The solid place committee had a white report taking that the solid place done. Uh, we're pleased quite with the training, Miss Amber, how does the solid place operation work for you, committee? And we give a vote on acceptance of their annual report that wasn't approved by the committee.
No other action required? Go back and place the committee, review, uh, resolution.
Do a thing. I was going to, do a resolution, lay it on your desk. If you're setting, this was a call to the budget committee, uh, Mayor Hudson and Mr. Perry, over. This comes from, from securities, they're due issue bonds, the bond ratings for the county. This is not obligating us, and y'all can free speak, y'all only think so than I do. This does not obligate the county to anything, doesn't say we're borrowing, you're not going to borrow money. But they said this is just basically a housecleaning resolution that we need to defend this county here, we did want to, like, ready for it. This was a, uh, this was a, was committee recommendation.
First committee recommendation, no second required. Any discussion on that, any questions? There is a proof. Question, they, we already made that. Here you go, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? All right, any other visits? The, you got it.
So for the sake of time, I'll try to be as brief as possible. And ask you just a few times to come up and kind of give a brief of what I do for the county. As most of you know, County Department Department in, uh, twenty twenty-one, started in July. At that time, we're not sure how many, uh, the mayor actually had, uh, had applied for the position. Depending on the, uh, committee, with the, uh, finding commission, and the board was on the deals, and there was a discussion in reference to possibly being the inspector for the position. At that time, I decided to go ahead and take over the position. And, uh, kind of figured that for everybody, it's something new, something that's grown in the county. Basically, started from, uh, walked into an office, it used to be, uh, not sure the exact office that was, but I know it had some storage items and several other things in there, basically cleaning it up and made it, and have a little, a little more work for the office. Little bit about myself, twenty-five year military vet. I'm in, uh, vertical construction engineering, I had a career. Started off in construction and, uh, carpentry and masonry, and then picked up all the other trades over the years. Uh, when I retired, uh, I retired basically as the equivalent of a general supervisor, a virgin. Came back here from my parents, I had a convention, helped those stuff look pretty bad. Took on a job as a police officer, after about two years of, and I hated it, just sitting back and trying to figure out the next step. Helped my parents out. Once I was able to step aside, I moved on, went back to work for the federal government, which is the last, one of the last positions that I had. I was actually a division chief, or a local works division in the, uh, department of the army for five years. Retired back here, picked up a job as a sheriff deputy, worked over at the courthouse, for a short period of time. And then this job came over, I thought I would take it on, based on my experience, and tried to figure this thing out, uh, to help out the county. Questions to ask, rumors of... Questions to ask, rumors have spread about all the things that I do or don't do, uh, so tonight I'm gonna try to, Mary Brinkin and Camp Go, or what, what, what happened. So after establishing on the office, had to get work on establishing a resolution. What did the county want to adopt? We had some documents, I had to go hunt Stacy Smith, I tell you, had to go hunt the records in his office, figure out what was already approved, what resolutions were on board, what policy procedures, regulations that we had. Pond gathering all that information, I decided to go forth and write a resolution, pretty much on my own, some feedback from the county attorney, and several other, uh, county and city area building departments. Uh, I think I wrote a fairly good resolution, it was approved by the county commission. First go, that's the sit, with Stacy Smith's office for ninety days, before we can move forward to execute, so in January of twenty twenty-two, we basically started the program. There was some turnover in the state, not gonna get into all that stuff, but, uh, but that turnover, basically, the fire marshal side versus the code enforcement side had a big raise. So no longer is any of the code enforcement officers that were on board when I came on board there anymore. It's a whole new group of folks, most of them have electrical background. If any of you know anything about trades, you know that if you go to school to be an electrician, it's two to four years. Age back two to four years, all these different schools, so I'm asked to be an inspector, it's just the equivalent of a general contractor, but know all the details, there's questions on the certification that comes up all the time. Where am I at as far as certifications? State program works like this. Basically, you have a building official, which is pretty much what I am for the county. You bring in a new inspector, he has one year, she has one year to get certified in one trade. Someone else will pick up another trade, have one year, someone else have another trade, pick up one year, okay? So I'm asked, basically, to get all three that is needed now, that were needed prior to be accepted in the job, in order to be fully self, or qualified, or certified. So basically now, under residential construction, you basically have to have plumbing, mechanical, and basically structural, which they call buildings. I'm already certified in the structural side, the other ones, I'm not, but I have years and years of experience. Uh, they speak for themselves, anybody that'd like to come and look at any of my military evaluations or awards, and see what I've done in my past, uh, I'm more than welcome to come into the office and I gladly share with you. I share with the county commissioners, county board chart, or flow chart, of what all I do in the office. For some, they look like this, but in reality, it's basically the equivalent of two divisions, you got planning, and you got compliance. Planning, you're looking for future growth, compliance, you're enforcing the rules of the resolution, which became the law of the land, and to violate a building permit or zoning, uh, resolution, is a class C misdemeanor. Are we there yet? Not quite yet, still working with people, because trust me, I see people come to the office all the time, don't know where to start. Mayor had asked me to develop a customer service branch, basically in the office, to alleviate people having to travel to Jackson, pay fifteen dollars and do a permit in the Jackson office. And now that you've come to my office and you all your permits, I can see what you have, you don't have to wait for your safety tank to be cleared, or whatever the case may be, your permit, we know you have it now, we have a certificate in hand, we can move forward with the permit application process. Now, what have I accomplished, or what have we accomplished here in the county? Kind of give you something to compare. State had their sixteen residential building inspections, or residential permits in Chester County, year prior to me coming on board. Sixteen. January, basically February, I'd already done eighty-five permits within Chester County. We're looking for ways to slow down folks moving into these, what they call relocatables, zoning is the thing that covers that. The other thing that would help cover that is that we had more people out here doing enforcement. I don't want to throw anybody in the bus, but if the electric company wouldn't turn on the power to these regular removals, I probably wouldn't have a job. If we were to get somebody certified in electrical, which has a lot of permitting in electrical compared to residential, uh, we would really have more control of what we can and cannot stop in the county, that we all want, uh, in our community. Code enforcement, real quick, I'll jump to that, very different, basically they have three things, you do systematic, or you start at point eight, or three hundred, point zero. Takes therapist's office, two people, six, five to six years, I don't want to speak for us, roughly taking a guess at, what I think I learned when I was over there in your office, but takes those two people about six years to do a systematic inspection, and they're still missing, because basically, there's short people out there, they'll wait until the, uh, field reviewers go by, and they'll put up whatever it is, they'll go and put up, wait six years to pay taxes on. This program will help to identify those things a little better, and, uh, get those things on tax rule, as well as give them properly and safe. County commission also has dollar amounts in front of it, so I'm not gonna go into my salary, but the department had brought in nearly about fifty thousand dollars within those eighty-five permits, plus all those, uh, permits that were part of the zoning. Everything in the office is basically a permit, doesn't matter if it's zoning, flood plan, uh, splitting a parcel, or whatever the case may be, it must be a permit. What I get from everybody here tonight, your constituents don't know about this program, your neighbors don't know about this program, or you call like most people do and say, I want to file a complaint, but I don't want to leave my name, I want to be a good neighbor, I don't want to get shot, and you can't. I ask you to communicate, program is under running, and it takes a community to make the program successful, not just one person. Can't pay for the sins of everybody else, uh, I can only do the best that I can do, and that's all, I think I've been able to, just, I've done, I've had. Subject to any questions, concerns, from the board, I'm glad they try to answer your questions, and I'll listen to them.
How long have you been working here?
How long have I been working here?
How long have you been having this job, if you've got nine?
Uh, twenty-two months.
Twenty-two months.
Twenty-two months.
And you hadn't got your life together?
One certification, you look at that chart that I gave you, of all these items on here, there's only one box that requires residential certification. Every other job on here, I'm authorized to do. So the only thing you can concern yourself with as far as certification is concerned by the state, is the residential inspector of an actual house or home that somebody's gonna live in twenty-four seven. And that's a safety thing. So the state, once I got started, submitted all the paperwork in that, the state looked, it took the commissioner a year to get here, basically, before he came in and actually sat down, and he began begging and begging and begging, come up and get this program up and running. The turnover took place, it came down, sent in, and he says, I never seen some paperwork, emails, you can track pretty much every minute you send out, well, I didn't want to argue with anybody, because I need him to get to do what I need to do, more so than he needs me. But one thing you have to think about is, is the state does not do any enforcement. So if you're building something, an electrician from the state goes out there, knows it's a relocatable or whatever, and decides to turn it on out, that's what you get. Relocatables is still good, if we can get to the point where everybody comes through this office, zoning compliance first, you kind of know what's going on, that's where we have to get to, everybody should come to the office first, prior to going online and just submit a building, because there's actually also no control over evaluations. You go online and say your house is going to cost you a hundred fifty thousand dollars, the building, nobody in the state, no question. Comes to this office, is gonna look at the square footage, well, got the address, cost for the square footage of the building, will make sure you get a permit that's worthy of, uh, county permission, or county's time, and, uh, complete and complete inspection. What other questions?
Are you, you've done half your life together, as a contractor?
So, I have one of the three residential certifications on the sheet. You look at residential instructions of a house, I have one, building, of the three that are required, plumbing and mechanical. Now, mechanical, basically is manufacturing certification, that's how it gets installed. I heard the test is a lot different. Plumbing, it is what it is, uh, again, you wanna look at my records, I can show you what I've done in the military for years and years and years.
You don't have a certification.
No, the state comes and does that, there is no requirement for certification, for me, if you want to put a bathroom in your shop, nobody's gonna sleep there overnight, I can come and inspect that. I cannot do electrical, and I cannot do anything that's done with the environment, that's key at the job. If you get yourself in trouble in code enforcement, if you call out there, and you try to tell somebody some weed that's thrown in their yard, is a noxious weed that's gonna take over the entire neighborhood, and you don't know what you're talking about. They hire a attorney, they come to court, slam down a case, who are you to tell me that that deed is not? Something that's good for the environment, you just have to kind of stay in your lane, and not get mixed into the other things that are out there. If you have to pay somebody to come in, and that doesn't matter if you're, or want to take something to court, then that's the choice that you make. Stay in your lane, and, uh, you know, what you physically don't see, and you say, hey, this is a problem, or something that you physically see, this is a problem, it's right up, you'll probably be all right, as soon as you start getting in areas, that, uh, that kind of love your ass off, and have your wheelhouse, and want to get in the county or something. Subject to any more questions? Again, only one area on this entire sheet needs certification, one.
All right, do you inspect the left?
Say again?
Are you gonna inspect the left?
The left, that's it.
The left.
Okay.
The mayor asked me that question, I can't keep up with all the shops and sheds.
Wow, okay, I just sent it on your page, or...
It's part of the residential.
Yeah, or one of them had failed, and I didn't want to know.
So the state, any inspections, residential, the state came in and assisted in what we call a rags surprise, uh, from the permits that we had already collected, we called it, we had to go and force, Commissioner came here later and said, hey, wait, hold on, take your time off, let us figure out what we're having, where we're gonna be. But I would like to make sure that the county got its one year, that, that inspector gets an opportunity to inspect everything, and then, in fact, one year is that we can only allow to inspect whatever you certify under, that one small category, which is residential, uh, construction inspection. Subject to any other questions?
You guys give us a lot of the qualifications.
So basically, the qualifications is how it works. Uh, I actually have a full chart for that as well. Basically, a first, you know, just go out, plug it on the door, knock on the door, get it to the start, somebody's home, we talk to them, we talk to them, hey, we got a new program, we're enforcing these finished nowadays, you need to clean up, do whatever the case may be, how long would it take to get this stuff cleaned up? Some of those folks are just fired up, ready to go, oh, get it done in three days, sir, how about this, I'll give you fourteen days, right, ma'am, I'll give you fourteen days, I'll come back in two weeks, we'll see where it runs, if there's, they're selling, they're closing, you know, they're going to file, that's why I'm so worried about this. But if I come back a second time, basically, you're, you're basically trying to get folks to do the program, and pay anything that applies, or you just take it to work, and make matters actually work something, and, uh, and you have, most of the people I see with problems out there have mental health disorders, and, uh, they don't have a lot of money. I haven't driven up to a four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollar home, and seen a bunch of children on the road.
Are you currently doing building inspections?
Yes, I am. I think I...
New construction?
So if it is a residential structure, like somebody lives in, the state will do that inspection, and if it is just a shop, shed, barn, or whatever else the case may be, they want to throw some plumbing in there, or, uh, air conditioning unit, they're on prosecutions, but if it comes to a place where there's gonna be somebody doing it twenty-four hours a day, basically, that has to follow up to the residential program. And I'm still right now in communications with the state attorneys, still getting one year, to make sure that we're good to go. We're right there at the threshold, we thought it would start early part of the year, but of course, with all of this stuff, consequences change. Every three years, the codes change, every time you turn around, the state's changing something, these still tiny homes, when I first started, state wasn't involved, state saw an opportunity to force some money, so they said, hey, let's take over the tiny homes, if it's under four hundred square feet. If it's larger than that, then we just have to look at it as a regular home, or whatever the case may be, and the state's still being involved.
So as a taxpayer, how much does it cost, let's say you're putting up a barn or a garage out there, plus eight hundred thousand dollars, what would it cost a taxpayer in Chester County?
So you're just gonna use, you're just gonna use that building as a utility building. Basically, my office's cost is about four tenths of a percent of the total bill.
Okay, so a hundred thousand dollar shop over that costs me?
Four tenths of a hundred thousand dollars, which would be less than, you know, most likely, a utility building, I'd say, somewhere around three hundred, four hundred dollars, depending on what owner you go to. But again, that's where the valuation part comes in, to sit down and go over there and make, make sure, you have to sign a short statement, that your intent is to build a shop or a barn, not later on, build a house, or whatever else the case may be, uh, because we have to protect the county, make sure you sell those documents. Commissioner Andrea has, uh, a lot of notebooks, you know, for the, the militaries, to make sure people are authorized, uh, signing the case sheets, so the county's not, uh, somebody builds something, that they, Richard King, and it's an industrial building, and you're something wrong.
So basically, the most things that you're gonna do with our hands?
Building permits is a large part of it, zoning is a large part of it, compliance, uh, is hit or miss, because if they call in, they're gonna do an informal complaint, and we'll take it as an informal complaint, I drive by, I'll do it. When I first started, I was actually never called, the heck going, the corners were fighting, we weren't damaging each other, and I was running from this end to the county to, that's a terrible business practice, you spend more time on the road than you will accomplish anything, and, uh, there is something already in progress, as far as getting cleaning up, or repairing, or whatever the case may be, that you're supposed to give them more time, not push directly for pushing.
Are you ever gonna be able to take money for your building permits?
I'm another person, I can, but...
Why do you need another person?
Because the orders that y'all send to my office, asking about certification, told me at that point, I don't have two people, two people, uh, anyways, two people need to get the office number from me to write on it. I've been ready to do that, I've taught the last few times, in reference to digital payments and that stuff, uh, I didn't make up the rules, I'm just trying to do the best I can, and if I had a way of collecting money, if I just had my, uh, responsibility, uh, for my office, but I, I'm not sure where y'all would take this program, the choice is so they'll give it all. But one man, one woman, gonna do so much. Started something from nothing, with no office furniture, no computer, no anything, uh, went to Southwest Human Resource Agency, drove my furniture over the back of that truck that I got from, uh, EMA, uh, seventeen, eighteen year old truck, uh, got software package, which is in your notes there, thirty thousand dollars, cloaked around out there for these software packages. I worked with a new company, that was, uh, had some pretty good history from, uh, feedback from, uh, years, and, uh, was able to get software package for thirty-five hundred dollars a year, it's, uh, internet based, pretty much worked out of anywhere, but, uh, there was a lot of negotiating that took me about six, seven months, because I found out.
Dion, you gotta give us a segue into a planning commission, or Tricia, I'm, I'm really put people on the spot, do you have anything you'd like to say about the planning?
I guess I may, I'll have to...
Yes, I do, don't sit down.
Thank you, Dion. Yes, we'll be careful, we have a spot, uh, in your packet, I hope that you find a spreadsheet, there will be one for property management, and one for, um, what's that, permits. And in that, Dion, will provide you a report, complete, what happens, uh, monthly, or to present to me, and then quarterly, or semi-annual, for the planning commission, I think, we will be on the process here, that they would present, but for this being, the, that's up to the commissioner, uh, often you want to see those reports. So I sat down with, um, Mr. Davis, um, a couple of weeks ago, and we went over, and did basically what I've been with ten years' employee, uh, I'd be kind of apologize, I've taken the chairman back in October, November, and prior to that, I was wondering what kind of thing I've gone, and, uh, there was a chairman, and so since then, I've tried to take it for incentive, and trying to see, so I basically sat in his face and asked him what was his challenges, what the weaknesses of the office were, and, um, that first twenty minutes that he talked was very insightful to issues with this, um, office, and it would be like coming in and getting in office and not having anything to follow in the process, I misunderstand, there's many protocols, but his process was not fair. I misunderstand, there's many protocols, but his process was not fair. And so, we've been trying to work on those, he's been very much gentleman about it. So, for instance, just the property management, we went through the protocol to say, "What are the steps? How do we end this when it gets to a point that it becomes a silver matter?" So, prior to this, and I've worked with Mayor Cutson, uh, there was nobody making a silver matter. So, while he could drive out with a fine or whatever, did you do anything, and then go with the budget? There has been a discussion with Mayor Scott that she will make a silver matter. So, it can go forward, it can be canceled. So, right now, it was just him, Mr. Davis, just writing tickets at their, you know, or appointments or whatever. But as he said, the community cares pretty much, there are some issues, and sometimes we just need to go through neighbor and second with our neighbor helping out. So, there's protocols, uh, processes, worksheets in there. Every how often you want to see the reports of how many permits he's doing. So, when you go across that heading, it'll have the date, the name, uh, what type of inspection, if it passed, if it failed, the date. So, you will actually have a process of saying what Mr. Davis does, and how many times he has had to visit this same property. Uh, and then you'll see whether it's completed or finished. So, uh, as this gives a new office position, and I know it's been twenty-two months, and there's only you that may say a lot of long time, but he's been a little insane. And, uh, so with that being said, uh, he and I discussed, and we're trying to set some three-month goals, and as the chairman, I'm asking y'all to carry with us just a little bit longer. Uh, we are asking that if you communicate anything to Mr. Davis that you want to be addressed, whether it's property management, seeing something filled, you know, to see a permit, whatever, please address him through emails, because he's going to also share those with the committee, and, uh, we will be meeting again this, next week, uh, because we have things to go over. So, is there any questions for me? Basically, this spreadsheet, y'all can thank Mattie for those on each other.
Thank you, Tricia. Any other business to come before this group? Yes?
It was blown up, they got bypassed, we didn't really hear what was happening, but he had presented a resolution for, just basically, Shem's and the logic committee and the whole commission voted and approved for six hundred thousand dollars, art plans for the building for library expansion. We need the resolution, because there's a construction grant up to one hundred thousand dollars that we're applying for. One of the activation requirements for that grant is a resolution. And that was in the packet, I remember seeing an email, the government's shaking library resolution.
Do you have a copy with you?
I've been out on leave since March, so I could do everything from home, um, this part of the week, but it was in the packet that was announced.
Was it in March, Tricia?
No, it said it was prepared for this one.
So, basically, I have to tell you, I can put this on the agenda for you. Special session, if you probably will have to have. If you've got a copy of it, you don't need to read it.
Basically, you don't mind if I keep saying that, I'm just remembering something, uh. Back here in county, the mayor sent me an email expressing gratitude and thanks to the people of Chester County for going and helping in their time, uh, the tornado, frost, and also for the highway department in the city, and all the residents who took up money. He wanted me to be sure that I, so, thank you.
I get all the phone, pulls up so many things, like I said, I have to go off this right now, get all the money. Uh, I remember getting an email from the mayor to everyone in board.
What does it give, what would it give the authority to do?
It's just saying that the commission already voted to give us six hundred thousand dollars of art funding for extension of the library. That's all it is. Just saying we already did that. We have a library for it.
Library for it.
The county commission did vote for that a few months ago.
Oh, that addition of the picture? That, uh, you, we can give the authority to, to approve that and bring it back. Basically, all your things before, just give it away.
I cannot submit a grant unless I have a resolution showing that we have other funding coming in for the construction.
Budget committee makes tomorrow night, let's get the discussion made, see if the, if this group will approve the budget committee to give the authorization of the full commission to the library. Committee tomorrow night, if they leave a copy of the resolution.
Is that something I can email, because I don't have anywhere for my son to go?
On a, you can either tell him, or you can tell the mayor.
I'll get him that though. Um, the other thing, Deion, is I just want to point out that in the budget, we have a maintenance of effort, and it does say that we're to give one hundred and nine thousand dollars. We can't go under that, or it's breaking the terms of that maintenance of effort. The issue last year was not recalled on any part, but that does mean that this year, we're not going to let the county that's contributing to us, if plans aren't made going forward, you are going to continue to be breaking this maintenance of effort. As of right now, only the TPA sharing portion is being set to be contributed to the library, seventy-five thousand, that is it. That only covers staff salaries and not even all of our utilities. So, basically, keep in mind, and I've said this in the budget meeting before, and I don't want to say it here, because it feels like it just keeps giving pushover, pushover, pushover. We do have a maintenance of effort that says that the county has agreed to provide us with a hundred and nine thousand dollars to fund this library, and that does need to come from the county for funding. We are not a money-making business, we are a service for our community. We bring in maybe six thousand to eleven thousand dollars a year. We do everything, we learn to do things ourselves, and we're not bringing in extra costs, but at the same time, a library is to be funded by the community, by the county. We have this agreement in place, and that is not new though. And I just felt like that may be said, because it keeps giving pushover and pushover, and nobody is answering the question or addressing the issues at hand.
Okay. We, uh, we need an option to get, to give the budget committee, uh, if they can do that actually tomorrow, the authority to approve that resolution going forward, and speaking, and will be speaking for the whole commission.
I'm making motion.
I'm second.
Motion made, and seconded, for that resolution to be approved by the budget committee at the next meeting. Any discussion? Hall and Kirk, please say aye.
Aye.
Or if you know what's, if not, we'll do that tomorrow. Any other business to come to us?
I'm Buddy Collins, I belong to the Veteran Honor Guard out of Parkview, through the form, military honor funeral for veterans all over West Tennessee. And, as you know, that's what I'm going to do, this, this, this donation from the county to us to help us continue our, what we do.
You got the amount?
A thousand dollars.
That'll have to go to the budget committee. At this time. They meet tomorrow night. Anything else? Charge of distance.
Yes, I will go too. Miss Janet Carroll, and Gail, and Fullington.
Move to approve. Okay. Motion made to approve, not released, and seconded. Hall and Kirk, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair, request a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.